The Board will now come to oral. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
President.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice.
Here.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard.
President.
Alderwoman Green.
President.
Alderman Odenberg.
President.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Presidents.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Davis.
President.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by James Croft of the Outreach Director of the Ethical Society of St. Louis.
Good morning and thank you to Alderman Reed for asking me to join you this morning. It seems appropriate that on the day you vote about a soccer stadium that you should be addressed by an Englishman.[164.76][164.76](Laughter). I'm James Croft, I'm clergy at the Ethical Society of St. Louis, and we are a humanist congregation, meaning we don't teach belief in God and we don't pray. So this morning I'm going to give an invocation in the form of a story, and I invite you to sit if that would be more comfortable for you. I moved to St. Louis from Boston in June of 2014, and that was a move out of my comfort zone. But I was following a calling. I wanted to come here to work for the Ethical Society and serve this community. And two months after I arrived, Mike Brown was killed, and we all know what happened. I got involved with clergy of many different religions to respond to that, and so began many months of street protests and marches and panel discussions and other things. And because of this work, I was invited to speak at a big community meeting in Sheafet's Arena. Some of you may have been there. It was a whole bunch of clergy onstage talking about what we should do about racism. But halfway through that meeting, young protesters decided that they had heard enough, and they marched up onto the stage chanting, "Let us speak! Let us speak!" And luckily Tracy Blackman, who was the emcee that night, realized the importance of what was happening and gave over the mic to the young people. And I will never forget, never, there was one girl, eleven years old, baby-faced and hardly tall enough to see over the podium, and she spoke of what she had seen on the streets of this city, her eyes shining with intensity, her face radiant with conviction. She said to the crowd, "I want you to tell me how you really feel." Mike Brown didn't get the chance to say how he felt before he died. It's almost inhuman. What makes humans human is we have feelings. But what most of these people do," and at that point she gestured to all the clergy behind her, including me, "what all these people do is they say how they feel and how motivated they are and what we should be doing, but they don't do it." And the audience roared. Our job, my job as clergy, your job as elected representatives of this city, is not just to say how we feel and how motivated we are and what we should be doing, but also to do it. So let us have the courage to step out of our comfort zones to confront injustices we may not even know exist yet. Let us work alongside people who are different to us, people of all religions and none, to better our community. Let us listen to the most marginalized voices and know when to hand over the mic. Let us feel what the communities we represent feel, even when they have no chance to tell us themselves. And let us not just say what should be done, let us do it. Thank you.[357.62][357.62](Applause).
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the Courtesy Resolution count?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution Agenda today.
Move about Alderman from the nineteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-second, Alderwoman from the nineteenth. Would you like to approach the dials?
I do, well, thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
I know. The whole team.
Go ahead, Mrs. Dixon.
All right. I have been asked to present our resolution to a representative of an organization, a corporation, and an entity, Nathan Nate Dixon. He's the station manager of Urban One, WHHL, and WFUN. So before I get into the resolution, let's talk about his privilege, his responsibility, and his dedication to the entity. You see, the entity brought about a different image in our community as far as being involved in it, as far as supporting issues that they are allowed to be out front with, and most especially using their resources so that people gain awareness, have an opportunity to share in resources, and most especially bring some fun and smiles when we can. So I know how dedicated he is, and I've been around for a moment working with this urban station, and it's more than an urban station. It is a station that recognizes and gives us in this region a different look. So Nate, your job is a job that requires a lot. It requires you to balance, it requires you to be extremely professional because of the complex nature of this region that you represent. But you've done it well. The station has grown in its media participation, it has been recognized on the highest levels possible, and you know, and your team knows, because I'm not going to leave the team out. He may be the leader, but if that team is not doing what it needs to be doing and doesn't respect him enough to do it right, it doesn't happen. So being a station manager, covering the St. Louis region for the U.S.-based media conglomerate of Urban One, formerly Radio One, knowing Kathy Hughes and what she believes in gives Nate the right reason to be proactive, sincere, and compassionate in serving this community. And you are board member of Heat Up St. Louis, I know that's a lot that provides many resources for this community, a board member of Infinite Scholars, that's a mission to assist minority students in assuring college scholarships, but most especially one of our leading organizations, RCGA. Being a part of that entity and knowing where things began and end in our commerce and growth activities here in the area puts you in a unique position to be the leader that you are at Radio One. So in honor of you today, the station manager, we give you this resolution on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. So, step forward.
Awesome, thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, okay. We gotta hold you for a minute. We gotta hold you one minute.
Put the mic in my face.[658.29][658.29](Laughter). Sorry, President.
These radio guys, look, I gotta move them over.[664.01][664.01](Laughter). So any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion. Alderwoman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would just like to rise and salute the Radio One family. I mean, your entire staff has definitely been an asset to my family, especially during campaign time, some of those crucial times with those ads, and we've been able to be very successful with your help, and I'm grateful for all the stuff that you all do in the community and as well as your other partners with the Demetrius Johnson Foundation and just their radio show and everything. So I just want to thank you all. DJ Cut is a great friend of mine as well, so thank you for your service, and it's well deserved.[709.23][709.23](Applause).
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion. And Nate, also, I just want to add my also thanks and congratulations to you and your team for a job well done. When you look at some of the things that Radio One has represented throughout the years, the fact that Kathy, that Mrs. Hughes was the first African-American woman to take a company and have it publicly traded in the United States, that's major. And being one of the largest, if not the largest, African-American-owned broadcasting company in the nation today, that's a lot, that says a lot. But also her ability to choose, you know, strong, effective leadership, and she saw that in you. So I want to thank you on behalf of the resident city of St. Louis, and also tell you that this resolution, although it's but a piece of paper, is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this moment in time. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis, you will be able to read amongst those records, Nathan Nate Dixon, I know that he passed his way, and he made such a significant contribution that we paused in our deliberations today to recognize you. So congratulations on a job well done.[810.43][810.43](Applause).
Can I talk now?[815.32][815.32](Laughter). No, just, you know, just real brief for you all, just so, so thankful, we're completely honored, and, you know, got the whole team up here because even though it's just me on here, nothing would happen without the folks behind me. I've got, if you don't mind, I've got Chesley Waddell, who's my marketing director, she makes everything happen. I've got Derek Green, who's my ops manager, basically boss of all the jocks. I also have DJ Cut, who's our PM drive, the heart and soul of ninety-five-five, a lot of you guys know him. And then I've got Mama Jackie, who's the office manager, and nothing happens at the radio stations without her. So just wanted to tell you guys, just deeply appreciate it and completely honored, and thank you so much, we appreciate it, okay? All right, all right, good deal.[867.63][867.63](Applause).
Yeah, you take it.
All right, awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Stand up now.
Over.
Let's give Nate and his team one more big round of applause as they exit.[891.13][891.13](Applause). Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to approach the dials?
Would the Alderman from the twenty-sixth join us here?
but he wouldn't let that happen. Have the opportunity to congratulate through resolution today a young man that I have known for many years, and we have not seen eye to eye since we first met, primarily because he was taller than I am. Through those years, I've watched him develop. We actually met when we were about fourteen years old.
At Safaya House.
It was a tutorial program for inner-city youth in the city of St. Louis. We were both in high school. We had issues with each other back then. We've watched him and his development in life move from there to being a significant individual in the annals of the city and in the history of the city of St. Louis. And so we have a resolution today. Today is his last day here at the Board of Aldermen. He's moving on to greater endeavors, and we know that life is a progression, that we're never in the same spot forever, that we will move on to something else, and today is one of those days of transition. And so then we read this resolution in his honor. Where is it? His sister's here also, Robin?
Yes.
There she is, over here on this side, Robin Boys. So we read the resolution here today. Whereas it has come to the attention of this honorable Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that Alderman Frank Williamson will soon leave the Board of Aldermen for better horizons and to embark upon new endeavors. And whereas for many years he has served the citizens of the city of St. Louis as the Democratic Committee Man of the Twenty-Sixth Ward, and then later expanded his services to the city as Alderman of the Twenty-Sixth Ward, first elected to this seat in April of two thousand and three. Whereas, though not always following the rules of the Board of Aldermen, Williamson has served with honor and distinction, sponsoring legislation that improved housing in his district, increased health service, and expanded capital improvements throughout his community. And whereas Williamson is a man tall in stature and big in heart, he is a native St. Louisan who is a graduate of Soden High School, attended Forest Park Community College, and served three years in the U.S. Army as a communications specialist. And whereas he's worked for over thirty years for the city of St. Louis in various positions, including two years in the city's license collector's office and six years in the sheriff's office. And whereas he's worked for many years in the city as the city's paymaster in the city treasurer's office and as the parking facilities manager in the city parking division. He was once the parking facility manager and was over the Keel, Marquette, and Argyle parking facilities, whether or not he had a decent car. Whereas Williamson understood St. Louis and its history, and was not always, and was, and is not only known for his height and resounding voice, but also for his quick smile and for his fervor for racial equity and the ending of prejudice and discrimination. And whereas he's a good son, father, brother, friend, community leader, and follows in the footsteps of his parents, who were also involved in community improvement efforts, and whose father was both a civic and political leader in the Twenty-Sixth Ward. Whereas, though this Board realizes that life progresses forward and that all here at this Board will one day move on, Alderman Frank Williamson will be missed and his presence not soon forgotten. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Alderman Frank Williamson on a job well done, and by adoption of this resolution wish him well in his future endeavors, and direct the clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of his proceeding, and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end it may be presented to our honorary at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. We have the opportunity to once again stand at the threshold of change. Change is inevitable, we know, that life is about change, that movement and change is what we face each day. And so we're here at this transitional period to send him off well, because our elders have taught us how you start a thing has a lot to do with how that thing ends. And so we want to end this one for you well and help you start the next one even better. And so when you finish that next phase of life, you can come out of that with smiles and saying that this Board of Aldermen has done well. We say that your work for our community is outstanding, and we appreciate your contribution to all that we have done these years, and don't expect any more compliments from me in two thousand and eighteen.[1271.13][1271.13](Applause).
Any further discussion, any further discussion. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I rise to oppose this resignation.[1283.13][1283.13](Laughter). And also, I rise to oppose the resignation of the Alderman from the Twenty-Sixth Ward. He was elected to a term, but does not end until April the fourteenth.[1296.41][1296.41](Laughter). And as such, he should stay here, because there is no better job than being a member of the Board of Aldermen.
There you go.[1305.01][1305.01](Laughter).
I've talked to other various people, and I think that, I don't think that we've ever refused a resignation, but I think we need to start.
We're rejected.
I think we need to start a new thing, and we need to make sure that the Alderman from the Twenty-Sixth stays here along with the rest of us. I've already had that conversation with Alderman from the eighteenth.
Yep.[1324.65][1324.65](Laughter).
But now I want to say, Alderman from the Twenty-Sixth, please don't go.[1330.13][1330.13](Laughter). I know that you will make much more money, but you could never have more fun or more responsibility.
What it's gonna do with this Friday's?[1340.13][1340.13](Laughter).
Than being a member of the St. Louis City Board of Aldermen.[1344.83][1344.83](Laughter). I'm saying all of that, I've known the Alderman from the Twenty-Sixth over thirty-something years. We are the same age within a few months. We've been allies before we've been on this Board and allies since he came on Board. I was leaving, the day he started was the day that I was gone from the first period. I've gotten the chance to come back and serve with him. I find him to be a fine person, and also much smarter politically than people know, okay? We've had a lot of political talks. He plays the good, okay, but he has a long game strategy. So I'm gonna tell that now since you're leaving, I'm gonna tell all your secrets since you're leaving, okay?[1384.13][1384.13](Laughter). But I met his son, I know his family, a member of his family used to live in my ward, his Uncle Lonnie, who was one of my favorite constituents. I knew his parents, my sister, I know most of his family. He comes from good stock, he is good stock. He has done a lot for the Twenty-Sixth Ward, and he will be sorely missed. I am happy that you are able to return to your home roots of where you're going, but we will miss you here, okay? And especially we will miss you because we only have eleven black Aldermen, and now we're down to ten black Aldermen.[1422.13][1422.13](Laughter). Okay? So, but no, we will miss you because of the great work that you do, your ability to get along with people, your ability to see both sides, your caring about your community, your caring about causes, like I said, the strategy that you employ sometimes, which is like acting like, okay, I don't know about that, but when I talk to you, as I said, I found out you had a really good long game. I like you as a friend, I hope we will still stay in contact. If you're in a position that I can call and complain, I'm gonna call you once if we can complain about something, okay? But I hope you enjoy your life, your new life, and I know your pension will enjoy your new life. Have a great day.[1463.21][1463.21](Laughter).
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this is gonna seem kinda odd, but I actually kinda agree with Alderman from the first in some of her comments. I sit on the personnel committee, we did not see a two-week notice on this.
Very good point, very good point.
I think there's reason to pause maybe.
Yeah.
But in all sincerity, Frank and I came down here at the same time, you know, April of two thousand and three, and we've been pretty much political buddies ever since. We've done a lot together when it comes to allocating resources, of course, our wards are side by side. I've enjoyed a very good friendship with Alderman Williamson. He's a man of a good character, he's very sincere, he works hard. People don't give us oftentimes enough credit for what we do, it's not as easy as we make it look. And I know he has worked tirelessly in his ward to make it a better ward, and I just salute him. I'm happy for him to be able to go collect bigger coins than just been an Alderman. Congratulations.[1529.71][1529.71](Applause).
Alderman from the fourth.
Frank, you have been a gentleman, a scholar, and a friend. I appreciate you, and what I've seen today for the first time was the people in the balcony stood up and clapped for you.[1547.13][1547.13](Laughter). So that means a lot when you stand up in the balcony, because those are your people as well, and I appreciate you, I love you, and I'm gonna miss you, but I'll see you over in the treasurer's office. Thank you.[1560.71][1560.71](Applause).
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Frank Alderman Williamson. It's been an honor to serve with you down here. You've been here much longer than I have been, and just finally got to chair Ways and Means. So definitely going to miss you and your thoughtfulness on that, chairing that committee. Was really looking forward to seeing the wonderful contributions that you can make to the city's budget, chairing that committee. But you've made so many wonderful contributions to the Board over your tenure here, and certainly in your community as well. And, you know, I've cherished the friendship that we've developed since I came down to the Board and really appreciate all of the tutelage and mentorship that you've provided me over the years as well. And I'm really sad to see you go, my friend, so I hope that we keep in touch, and I'm super happy for you on your new role, and hopefully look forward to working with you on that role as well.[1612.53][1612.53](Applause).
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Frankie, it has been an honor working with you. I remember attending your dad's funeral with you and getting a little bit closer to you, and yes, the Board will miss you. We don't always agree, I agree with Terry. I do want to remind the Alderwoman of the first that now between Terry and Frankie, you move up two spots, and (laugh) I want to remind Shane that now two offices with windows in the back have now become open, so some people that had not had the opportunity to chair committees will. Anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in. But anyway, Frank, it has been nice working with you, and I appreciate you, and good luck, and God bless on your new job.[1664.33][1664.33](Applause).
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take this opportunity to thank Alderman Williamson. As someone relatively new to the Board, you have been extremely helpful to me, offering advice and insight along the way, and that is really an invaluable gift here at the Board of Aldermen to have somebody like you. So thank you very much for all of your service and just for all of the help that you've offered me this last year and a half. Thank you.[1693.13][1693.13](Applause).
Alderwoman fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Frank, I am so sad to see you go. I second the Alderwoman from the first in that, I mean, you have, you have been an absolute wonderful person to work with, and somebody that, you know, when I first got down here was such a mentor and somebody that has helped, you know, show me the ropes and make sure that, you know, I really felt a place here, somebody that always picks up the phone, returns phone calls, and is willing to sit down and do a lot of difficult work, have tough conversations at times to get things done. And so I really, really expect, respect you, I'm going to miss you a lot, I think a lot of us are gonna miss you. Best of luck in your next endeavors. We expect you to be here and show up still from time to time and make your face seen. I'm really sorry to see you go, both as a colleague and as a friend, so good luck.
Thank you.[1761.63][1761.63](Applause).
Alderman from the seventh.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Big Frank, gonna miss you, man. Enjoyed working with you the last few years. I think we met back when I was working with the Central Committee, and you were the Alderman of the Twenty-Sixth. I've got great respect for what you've done in your ward, development you've brought there, and the improvement- Enjoyed working with you the last few years. I think we met back when I was working with the Central Committee and you were the Alderman of the 26th. I've got great respect for what you've done in your ward, development you've brought there and the improvements you've made. And I will say in my short time down here, it's been a pleasure working with you. You're always someone who's straightforward, positive, a man of your word. I really appreciate that. I've learned a lot from you and I enjoyed working with you and I wish you the best of luck in your new gig. Thanks.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chairman, it has been an honor serving with you and under your leadership as chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. I had the pleasure of seeing you operate for a little over two years and I can see your passion and your commitment to North St. Louis and to the residents throughout this entire city. I'm a little disappointed and sad. Our communities are losing a powerful voice in you and in the Alderman from the 18th Ward. But I'm also optimistic that you guys have left a building legacy for continuing change and inspiring people to be actively engaged in our communities and continuing to fight. Thank you for all of your service. North St. Louis is better because of you and I do, I agree with the Alderwoman from the first ward. I will not accept her resignation. I think we need, I think we need to do a roll call. We, we got, Mr. President, point of order.
Point of order, well taken.
Thank you for your service, Alderman. We appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and Alderman Williamson. It has been a short eight months with you here on the board, but like the Alderwoman from the 28th described, you have been nothing but welcoming and kind and collaborative and that has been wonderful to share this experience with you. I was also looking forward to your continued leadership on the Ways and Means Committee. I thought you did a fantastic job this last time through. So I would like to join also with the Alderwoman from the first. So, you know, I was going to move to ask that we embank the resolution, but I prefer to go with Alderwoman Tyus. So thank you so much for your service and best wishes for you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Good morning, everyone. Alderman Williamson, you will be missed. You've done a fantastic job. It's been a pleasure working with you. I've always enjoyed your perspective on things and I didn't know Robin was your sister. She's one of my constituents. But now I see you both have the famous, beautiful smile. And thank you so much for your service, but you will be missed, but I might be calling on you over there at the parking commission. Thank you. Bye now.
All right.
Also, my name added to that.
Alderwoman from the first, Alderwoman from the first, were you gonna do an embank motion?
I didn't know if everybody was finished. Did you? I was gonna do that when the people were finished.
Oh, you're waiting till everybody finishes. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Frank, we've known each other over thirty-plus years. I don't know who worked in many more different offices, you or I. So Frank, it's been a pleasure. We've been friends for years and years and I think Frank and I can agree, we've never had one harsh word towards each other. We shared a birthday together, we went to, we went to public schools even though I was a Dutchman. But, but just, just knowing you for all these years was a pleasure and when you worked in the treasurer's office, you know, you and Willie Carter, and Willie was my buddy. But it's gonna be bittersweet without you down here, but I'm happy for you. I know we talk a lot, you know, we gotta maybe find a job, make more money. But, you know, and a lot of people don't understand the job as an Alderman. I mean, it can be tiring at times for, I got a phone call quarter to two this morning and woke out of bed because somebody was jackhammering on the street. So, but Frank, you've done a fantastic job in your ward, you've represented your constituents well, and I know you'll do a better job in your future endeavors, but I'm gonna miss you down here. So you have a good one.
Thank you very much. Alderman from the 17th.
I just wanna rise, I think so much has already been said, I don't think there's much to add, but Frank, you have, your disposition is hard to argue with. It is just absolutely, you're one of the most pleasant people to be around. I think your, your time down here, you've epitomized what has been, what is intended by public service. Not a whole lot of attitude, not a whole lot of pretense, just a lot of quiet, simple, nose to the grindstone, getting things done. It's been really wonderful to work with you and thank for, thank you for your years of service.
All right. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm really at a loss for words, which normally I'm never at a loss for words, but I raised my kids in the 26th Ward, so I do know the difference in what he has achieved. And he knows I am quietly nosy. He knows that if he ever needed anything, I was there. I've watched him in his campaigns. He is a master. Don't let that quietness fool you. But he also understands people. And so even when people don't know what is best for them, you have to go ahead and nudge it forward so that they can actually enjoy it in the end and know that it was the best. And I've watched him do that. You see, during the years of the resurgence of the 26th Ward, there were a lot of people who had different ideas and they normally would cause too much ruckus on the things that really didn't matter because the picture was much bigger and they couldn't see it. So I appreciate your service over there as I drive through that area and you know I called you, I was like, uh-huh, you hit this one, didn't you? But he's working. He's working. So it is wonderful that you've been here, been a part of this city, have always been respectful in your role, which a lot of people don't understand, but you are, you're going to be missed. And again, I was, continue to be quietly nosy and sometimes I'll be calling you for assistance and advice. God bless you.
Thank you. Alderman from the 10th.
Mr. President, members of the board, Frank and I both came in down here sixteen years ago or so. The first few years here, I shared the office with the Alderman from the 18th when he moved on to his private office. I then would like to say I shared the office with the Alderman from the 26th, Frank, but with the two of us in there, we had to step out to change our mind. There's no room for both of us in those little offices. But Frank is, it's been nothing but a pleasure constantly to know you. I was just, no offense to any other Aldermen served in here, but it's always a pleasure to see you. I look forward to seeing you. Because I knew we could have a nice conversation about anything and everything. So best of luck on all your further endeavors. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 4th.
I can use the stop on you. Alderwoman to the first? Yeah, yeah. I have known you for a long time and my father has also. And if he was here, he would have a lot of inquisitive things to say. I'm not as funny as he is, but I would say that you have been very helpful in me understanding how this board works, especially coming into it and being here or being involved in the city for such a long time. It still takes a lot of time to learn how to do this job and we all need, excuse me, just kinda ran up the steps, so. I know I'm young, but hey, y'all be surprised.
Lot of steps.
But you are one of those individuals who see the need to help people when they actually need help and that's really kinda hard to come by. A lot of people kinda watch you fall. And I'm not saying that about this board, but just in life. And I can appreciate you not letting us fall, walking through these doors and, you know, helping support us in the things that we wanna do. So wherever it is that you are going, I've heard some things, don't really know what's going on, but hopefully we can, we still see you as a friend, we can call on you when we need you and we just appreciate you, Frank. Thank you.
Yes. Madam Mayor?
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Members of this board, I really wanted to just step in today to say thank you to my colleague, Frank Williamson. Frank, you and I have worked on a lot of things together and I have really appreciated all the work that you've done over the years for this city and for all of your constituents. And I've appreciated the opportunity to get to work with you. You are a mensch. You are a stand-up guy and we will miss you. The work that you did this past year as chairman of Ways and Means was absolutely so helpful and essential to this city. We will miss you. I will miss you here at this Board of Aldermen and thank you for everything that you've done.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the boards, it is with regret and hesitation that I would ask if there are no people that, none of the Aldermen oppose this move, that we would move to pass this resolution number 195 embanked?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of the resolution embanked. Yes, yes. We're gonna, we're about to hear from the, from the Alderman from the 26th. And I think, I'm probably in the most unique position of probably most of the people in the city of St. Louis because this general giant standing to my right, I'm probably one of maybe one or two people to actually get him riled up to the point where he was really mad. And the funny, and those of you who are here, you know what I'm, you remember, and the funny thing about it is this elder that we call Wise Man to my left warned me five minutes before, don't do that. And, you know, Frank, it's been great working with you. As everybody has said, you're a general giant, right? You're, 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 you're an imposing figure of man, but you have a heart of gold. You have a, you have a big heart and you're always willing to help, you're always willing to reach out, you're always willing to go to extra step to help other people in need. And that's what being an elected official is about. It's about serving the people and you have indeed served the people for many years. I think you will enjoy the new job that you're going to. Even though you failed to send the appropriate documentation to the chairman of personnel and the personnel committee, we were overlooked at today. But congratulations on a job well done. Enjoy your time in the new job. Still, understand that this is your home, you're welcome to come back up at any given time. And I'm committing to you, I will not make that mistake ever again. As I have, as I have not. But congratulations, Frank, for everything that you've done and on your retirement and moving to a bigger role in the city of St. Louis. Thank you. Whee, boy, I tell you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, it's really an honor to really serve on this board for the fifteen years that I've been here. I've learned a lot and formed some real good relationship. This is one hell of a board of legislative. And as Aldermen, people don't really understand what we go through. And I think the service that we have distributed over the years has been excellent. Now sometime we fuss, we fight and we don't always get along, but at the end of the day, you're fighting for the residents in your community. So sometime we don't always agree with each other. But over the years, I've formed some good relationship, good friendships with everyone. It's been a pleasure even working with the board of the wards that border the 26th, you know, and you have to work together with those particular Aldermen and Alderwomen. You know, working with Jeffrey Boyd in 22nd Ward, we shared neighborhoods, so we had to come together and we worked very, very well together. Over the years, working with Light of Crucins was excellent and we did a lot of good things in working with the new Alderwoman, Alderwoman Navarro. Last but not least, this guy behind me, I tell you, he was my mentor and I learned a lot from him. Alderman Terry Kennedy, very intelligent brother. And like I said, we knew each other back in high school. We were rivalries, he was Rashawn Wolverine, I was a Soul and Tiger. So, you know, in those days, you kinda had a little rivalry going on, but, you know, that's right. But, you know, we got along and we had our differences even back then, but at the same time, you know, we worked well together, knew each other years and years ago. Matter of fact, Al Chappelle and Veris Jones used to drive the vans that would take us home from Safari House. And even Darlene Green was in that, in that class too, was in that Safari House. And that was a program that really helped students in the public school system to get them ready for college. It was an excellent program, it really was. And you learned a lot. You learned some things you wouldn't learn necessarily in a classroom in high school. So I really appreciate that, that experience. But there's so much to say. I love you, men and women. One of the things I'm gonna miss more than anything is working with you. Now I'm not going away, it's not my funeral, so I will be around. So you can call on me anytime, you may see me here from time to time at the board, I'm not sure, but I'll be dropping in if nothing else. But what really makes me feel good, and I'm sure it makes you feel good, is helping people in your ward. That's a real good feeling that is hard to explain on the inside and I know all of you have experienced that, you know, and that's what I'm gonna miss more than anything, is helping people. And I just wasn't born with that trait, just like I'm sure you wasn't, but you know, my parents inherited it and me and my sisters and brothers, you know, and we watched them and they taught us how to give back, how to care for your community. And I think that's very important, that's something we need to continue to do. So God bless you all, I'm gonna miss you, but I'll be around, I will be around. So thank you so much. Amen. Appreciate it. So I'm gonna ask the members of the board to very quickly move over here if you wanna be in the photo. Do, we're gonna do a quick class photo with Frank and then we'll get going.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signature five percent. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. With that, we're back to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? While everybody's making it back to their seats, I'd like to introduce, as one of my honored guests today, Anthony Shaheed. Anthony Shaheed, thank you so much for being down today. Aldermen from the fourth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today my committee woman, Dwayne Evans, and Sheriff Vernon Betts. Thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans from the St. Louis Kansas City Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President, and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my honored guests Nathan Lett and Demetris Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, Lou Hamilton, Clint McBride, and Megan McBride.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my honored guest this morning, Ms. Sheila Jones with Ameren, Missouri, Dave Sweeney with Lewis Rice, Chris Pickle, and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us Carolyn Kendo Betts of the Enterprise Holding Foundation. Let's give her a big round of applause. Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap us up.
And, Mr. President, members of the Board, we're getting here on November 30th, which is Mason Jar Day, which means nothing to anyone, but more importantly, on this day in 1982, Michael Jackson released his album Thriller. And what we're proud to say is that Alderman from the 3rd is wearing the shoes worn on the album cover. If you'd like to show us all the shoes.
We also have with us Representative Carter. Thank you for joining us today. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the November 9th and 16th minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signature five percent. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take, uh...
122?
122, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place our Board Bill 122 on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items 8 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney to enter into a contract with the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for funding to create a conviction integrity unit within the Office of Circuit Attorney and authorizing the Circuit Attorney to expend the contract grant funds necessary to support this effort, including the hiring of personnel and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 171, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance adopting the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with amendments and, and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 172, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the southern 169 feet of the 15-foot wide north-south alley bounded by Robert on the north, Vermont on the east, Colin on the south, Alabama on the west, and City Block 3064A as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the chapter and imposing certain conditions on vacation. Board Bill 163, sponsored by Alderman, 173, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and ordinance creating a new chapter under Title 23 of the Revised Code titled Small Wireless Facilities and pertaining to the establishment of procedures and requirements relating to the construction and deployment of small wireless facilities to be codified in Chapter 23.59 of the Revised Code containing a severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 174, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance establishing a stop site at the intersection of Ridgewood and Wilcock regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Wilcock at Ridgewood and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 170 and 171. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 172, 173, and 174. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 160, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey pursuant to ordinance 68937 and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Bob Gibson Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Gibson and South Kings Highway and run east on Gibson to the intersection of Gibson and Kentucky. The following board bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and ordinance for the creation of Disconnected Youth Task Force to study the obstacles to education and employment to disconnected youth in the city and requiring said task force to compile a report of their findings and recommendations to be submitted to the Mayor and Board of Alderman Standing Committee to be designated by the President of the Board of Alderman within one year following the first meeting of the task force. The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee. Board Bill 72, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Navarro, Alderman Caro, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Navarro, and Alderwoman Howard and ordinance revising the transparency in government law, ordinance 69707 and ordinance 70321 codified in Chapter 3.115 of the Revised Code to the, to require the effective closed captioning of all public meetings of the St. Louis Board of Alderman, including committee meetings, the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, and the Preservation Board. The following board bill was reported out of HUD's Committee. Board Bill 151, sponsored by Alderwoman Negrecia and ordinance amending, and ordinance amending ordinance number 69979, 69980, 69981 approving and authorizing the execution of First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city and ROL, capital three, authorizing other related actions and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Vicaro and ordinance reapproving, approving a redevelopment plan for 5550 Philer. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1815 Locust. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4328 Swan. Board Bill 166, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of project, projects therein, whereas the tax increment financing plans and projects listed in Exhibit A were approved by the Board of Alderman. Board Bill 157, sponsored by Alderwoman Negrecia and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for Shoto, Jefferson, LaSalle, Missouri, Hickory, Mackey Place redevelopment and containing that severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee. Board Bill 163, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Alderman Gunther and ordinance amending ordinance 66384 approved July 31, 2004 as follows. Section 1 of ordinance 66384 is amended by adding a new subsection, subsection 10.04.145 to be titled Animals Putting Persons in Fear: Adoption of Strays, Dangerous Dogs, Teetering Confinement and Treatment of Dogs and Cats Owner Guardians' Property, Relinquishment of Owned Dogs and Cats to the Animal Regulation Center, Neuter Assistance Education Funds, Interfering with Health Officer or Agent, and containing that emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services. Board Bill 169, sponsored by the following Alderpersons: Ornowitz, Green, Gunther, Rice, Howard, and Martin and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of City Department of Health to enter into and execute a opioid crisis response services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and City and Services in order to help to fund, excuse me, personnel costs, auto travel reimbursement, and equipment supplies for the crisis response, resource response team upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment and containing that emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2647 through 2651 Washington. Board Bill 29, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the Tiffany Neighborhood Scatter Sites area. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2811 through 15 Locust. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and ordinance reapproving a redevelopment plan for 3521, 3526, 3527, and 3534 Oregon. Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3106 Merrimack. Board Bill 162, sponsored by Alderwoman Rice and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4102 Shaw. Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3555 through 59 California. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the Mayor and Comptroller to, of the city to execute an easement agreement, which shall give, give, grant, and extend and confer perpetual perpetuity on the city and its agent successors assigns the right to install, construct, maintain, repair, and upgrade a water main for the purpose of delivering water, approving an easement, an easement agreement for the perpetual easement authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 133, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service authorizing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its new revenue bonds in order, in order to fund the construction, repair, improvement, expansion, renovation, furnishing, and/or equipping the Savanis Convention Center in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 105 million and containing that emergency and severability clause. Board Bill 158, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller to execute a quitclaim deed to Mary Jane Wagner of certain city-owned property located in City Block 5054, which property is known as 3120 Alfred Avenue upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum 55,000 and containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading.
We would dispense with line items 14 through 16. Third reading consent.
Board Bill 150, sponsored by Alderwoman Negrecia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, pedestrian travel in the north-south alley, the remaining portion of the east-west alley and the north-south alley in the City Block 2273 as bounded by Union Pacific Railroad, 21st Gracie, and 22nd, and a portion of Gracie beginning east of 22nd and extending easterly to the portion of Gracie previously vacated by ordinance 65340. Board Bill 152, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis pursuant to ordinance 68937 and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Reverend Dr. W. H. Goldley Jr., which shall begin at the intersection of North Lefenwell and Franklin and run west on Franklin to the intersection of T.E. Hundley and Franklin. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from D Multiple Family Dwelling District and H Area Commercial District to the H Area Commercial District for the portion of the parcel known as Lot A on the attached Exhibit A, and to the D Multiple Family Dwelling District for the portion of the parcel known as Lot B in City Block 5520 and containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of reading, third reading consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Negrecia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Kong, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Martin, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Kong, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Kong, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Williamson, 27, I vote. [Crosstalk 00:05:31].
The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 163, sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Gunther and Ordinance Amending Ordinance 66384, approved July 31, 2004, as follows. Section 1 of Ordinance 66384 is amended by adding a new subsection, subsection 10.04.145, to be titled Animals Putting Persons in Fear: Adoption of Strays, Dangerous Dogs, Teetering Confinement and Treatment of Dogs and Cats, Owner-Guardians' Property, Relinquishment of Own Dogs and Cats to the Animal Regulation Center, Neuter Assistance Education Funds, Interfering with Health Officer or Agent, and Containing an Emergency Clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services. Board Bill 169, sponsored by the following Alderman persons: Ornowitz, Green, Gunther, Rice, Howard, and Martin, and Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Director of City Department of Health to enter into and execute a opioid crisis response services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and City and Services in order to help to fund, excuse me, personnel costs, auto travel reimbursement, and equipment supplies for the crisis response, resource response team upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 2647 through 2651 Washington. Board Bill 29, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for the Tiffany Neighborhood Scattersites Area. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 2811 through 15 Locusts. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 3521, 3526, 3527, and 3534 Oregon. Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 3106 Merrimack. Board Bill 162, sponsored by Alderman Rice, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 4102 Shaw. Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and Ordinance Approving a Redevelopment Plan for 3555 through 59 California. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and Ordinance Recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the mayor and comptroller of the city to execute an easement agreement which shall give, grant, and extend and confer perpetual perpetuity on the city and its agents' successors assigns the right to install, construct, maintain, repair, and upgrade a water main for the purpose of delivering water, approving an easement agreement for the perpetual easement authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 133, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and Ordinance Recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, and the Board of Public Service authorizing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its new revenue bonds in order, in order to fund the construction, repair, improvement, expansion, renovation, furnishing, and/or equipping the Savannys Convention Center in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $105 million, and containing an emergency and severability clause. Board Bill 158, sponsored by Alderman Volmer, and Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the mayor and comptroller to execute a quitclaim deed to Mary Jane Wagner of certain city-owned property located in City Block 5054, which property is known as 3120 Alfred Avenue, upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum $55,000, and containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading.
Move Dispensable Line Items 14 through 16, third reading consent.
Board Bill 150, sponsored by Alderman Ingrascia, and Ordinance Recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, pedestrian travel in the north-south alley, the remaining portion of the east-west alley, and the north-south alley in the City Block 2273 as bounded by Union Pacific Railroad, 21st Gratiot, and 22nd, and a portion of Gratiot beginning east of 22nd and extending easterly to the portion of Gratiot previously vacated by Ordinance 65340. Board Bill 152, sponsored by Alderman Davis pursuant to Ordinance 68937, and Ordinance Authorizing the honorary street name Reverend Dr. W. H. Goldley Jr., which shall begin at the intersection of North Lefenwell and Franklin and run west on Franklin to the intersection of T.E. Hundley and Franklin. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and Ordinance Recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from D Multiple Family Dwelling District and H Area Commercial District to the H Area Commercial District for the portion of the parcel known as Lot A on the attached Exhibit A, and to the D Multiple Family Dwelling District for the portion of the parcel known as Lot B in City Block 5520, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of reading, third reading consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 14th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Combe. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Martin. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Combe. Alderman Boyd. 25 I-votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, Report of Engrossments.
Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and Ordinance Recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing the mayor of the city to submit a 2019 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Entitlement Program.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 122.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for passage of Board Bill Number 122.
It's moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Combe. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Martin. Alderman Williamson. 27 I-votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 122.
That is the extent of third reading, Report of Engrossments.
Report of Enrollment.
Board Bill 150, 152, 129, and 122.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, on open session, affix First reading, Resolutions.
Resolution 189, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, Central West End North District, North Business District Budget.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on first reading, Resolution 189.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt Resolution 189 by unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, Resolution 189 is approval of the budget for the Central West End North Special Business District, these come to us once a year, I have reviewed the budget and talked with the commissioners, and move for adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 28th, entertain the second, second by Alderman from the 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 190, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, Cathedral Square Business District Budget Approval.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 190.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to withdraw Resolution 190 as we have previously approved the budget for this particular special business district.
Very perfect, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, Resolution 190 was withdrawn by the sponsor.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
Resolution 180, sponsored by President Reed and the following Alderman persons: Kotar, Rhodey, Jeffrey Boyd, Odenberg, Middlebrook, Vacoro, Volmer, Davis, Pam Boyd, Mohammed, Ornowitz, Williamson, Howard, Murphy, Hubbard, and Bosley. The Board of Aldermen strongly support the efforts by the ownership group to secure an MLS team for the city.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution 180.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move to second read and adopt Resolution 180.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 10th, please proceed on.
Thank you, Mr. President, well, I think you're all familiar with this resolution, it was received with great fanfare in the HUDs Committee the other day and was the subject of much press here in town, Resolution 180 would do something very simple, it would show this city's support and this body's support for the Taylor and Kavanaugh's families' plans to bid for a Major League Soccer expansion team and build a soccer stadium in downtown West. I want to put this in perspective, what we're doing here today, what we're not doing, let's start with that, we're not approving a lease agreement, we're not approving the final financing of this project, what we're doing is we're showing support, we're showing support from this body that we support soccer, that we support these philanthropic and business leaders, and that we want this stadium in our city, that's what we're doing, this is simply a resolution. There will be future debates on the lease agreement, which I understand doesn't necessarily come before this Board, but other authorizing legislation will, we'll debate whether or not we want a transportation development district, we'll debate whether or not we want a community improvement district for this site, those will all happen here in this body, we will have a say in this process going forward, all we're doing today is simply showing our support, and what are we showing our support for? We're showing our support for the investment of 290, sorry, $390 million in private money in the city of St. Louis, a project that will bring us a soccer team, a sport that's loved not only in St. Louis, in the United States, but around the world, it will create thousands of construction jobs, 140-plus full-time jobs, and in year one, when this building comes online and this team is playing soccer, the city will generate $1.4 million in tax revenues from this site, a site that is currently a winding ramp of on-and-off ramps for Highway 40 that's scheduled to be abandoned in the coming years as the new interchange at Jefferson opens. So we're taking underutilized land in downtown West and making it, as the President said in our committee meeting last week, an anchor in downtown West, an anchor between the business district and midtown with Wells Fargo, and then St. Louis University to the west of there, and we're making Clark Street a great sports street with Busch Stadium and Ballpark Village, the Enterprise Center, and on the west, this new football stadium. So, I understand there's going to be a lively debate today, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, I would caution everybody that, again, this is just a resolution we're passing today, this is not the final deal, I know there's a lot of questions, there's going to be a lot of questions, I think this is a great deal, I think the financial analysts of the city have said this is a great deal, but like anything, there is some risk, right? Nothing's ever perfect, but I think at the end of the day, this is a project that everyone should support, that people who visit this facility, this stadium, they will help pay for the construction of it through taxes generated on the site, and in the words of Calvin Adams, the superintendent of the school district, this is a no-brainer, so I would hope that you'll support Resolution 180.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, at the request of Alderman from the 4th, please add his name as a co-sign.
So noted.
Alderman from the 24th.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President, I rise in support of the resolution as well, I won't reiterate what the Alderman from the 7th said, I will just, as I am always want to do, sound a few notes of caution, I think the basic structure of what we're pursuing is good in most ways, and I think the only things we need to sort of worry about down the road are the specifics of the lease, which we don't know yet, and the specifics of how we might deal, how a future city, a future Board of Aldermen might deal 10 or 20 years down the road with future investments into the facility, I think keeping in mind that two decades from now, we don't necessarily know who the owners of this facility will be, so, I don't, you know, I will enthusiastically vote yes, I will just remind everybody that our, this Board's work is not done to make sure that the lease is a good and fair lease, and we'll just, we'll warn our successors in these roles that they may have to, you know, they may have to make some tough decisions about this 20 years down the road, and the net gain to the city in tax revenue, which there certainly is a net gain, which I think we're all in favor of, can theoretically be whittled down by future expenses at the stadium if we have to, you know, pay for those, if the city has to pay for those, so, but today, I will vote yes and encourage other folks to do the same, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I also rise in supporting this resolution today, I shall echo the sentiments of the Alderman from the 24th Ward, in good business, you do analyze everything, you should be very good stewards in forecasting the possibilities of things that may or may not happen, but what I'm pleasured with is to say that when this ownership group came to us, they had thought about some of the same things already, and have agreed to take those responsibilities, and have agreed to do, to have a lease that is a triple-net lease, and have agreed to say, let's put some reserves aside for what may or may not happen in the next 20 to 30 years, and then agreed to say if that reserve is not enough, that that expense will be upon us, so I understand exactly what the Alderman from the 24th Ward is concerned about, but one of the blessings in this opportunity for us is that we have two entities, two families, who are good business groups, who have sustained not five years or 10 years, one in particular, not just 20 years or 30 years, but let's just go on and on, and then aside from that, they have been unselfish in their responsibility to this city, yes, they have a lot of money, but they sure have donated a lot of money to this state of Missouri, when we are in trouble, no matter where it is, they are the first in line to assist, and they don't ask for any accolades for it, many times they say, could you just be quiet, because they don't need that, but they are there to make sure that we're okay. The other part I like about it, that the main reason I'm supporting it, is for the opportunities for the youth and families in this community, you see, our youth, most especially in the black community, they weren't playing soccer, they were not playing soccer, in the public schools, they started, I want to say, three years ago to really have organized soccer, and those young people exploded, sold to Ann High School, went to the state, just that quick, so it is an opportunity for more scholarships for young people, not only that, to have some new kinds of relationships, knowing and understanding the dynamics of that different type of team support, I'm looking forward to the jobs that are going to be created, you see, every time we have this type of opportunity, it puts this city in a place where it has more, has more of an ability to sustain itself in the future, you see, the funds that we're talking about today for this project, that's putting us in a better stance 10 and 20 years from now, because this is not an if and maybe that'll be here for a year or two, this is an if and maybe that's going to be here for 20 and 30 years, so we need to overwhelmingly support this so that we can be assigned a team for our city, so I'm looking forward to this, I thank the Kavanaugh's, I thank the Taylor family, because, again, you've stepped up to the plate, and I've been associated with them over the years, I know what they do for our nonprofit organizations, I know what they've done for the city of St. Louis, I know what they've done for the state of Missouri, I know what they've done across this United States of America, when you look at the different facilities that they have, where people are employed, and they treat their employees well, that's another thing you got to talk about, because if you're going to have the entity, you got to know that the people are going to be taken care of, so I give my full support to this, and I would definitely have the oversight that the Alderman from the 24th talked about, because that is an important part of doing good business, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I also rise in full support of this resolution, and I would like to also echo some of the remarks that the Alderman from the 19th made, that when you look at evaluating a sponsorship, or an ownership, or a real estate developer, or a business, the first thing you look to when there are, sort of, when there's just an outline of a financial package and a structure, and more steps to happen, you know, I've been part of banking, the better part, banking and finance, better part of 15 years, and the first thing you do when there are more steps to take, when you're evaluating the situation, is look at a track record of ownership and sponsorship, what has the business partners done prior to this date, do they have follow-through? Do they have a balance sheet to back up the actions they're hoping to take? I think we can all agree today that that's not a problem, this is a banking, from a banking perspective, if you were looking at this situation, this is an underwriter's dream, these are risk-takers who are taking minimal return over 30 years, one that normal risk-takers would not take, between 2.5% and 5%, normal risk-takers would not take that, they put their money where they can get more of a return on their investment. We are so fortunate to have this situation in front of us today, so, when there are a few details that need to come together, right, this is, the Alderman from the 7th said it, this is a resolution showing full support that we want to evaluate this and put the financing package that's outlined today forward, so let's support it, knowing full well, we have to come back and make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and that the arithmetic squares, and I think, knowing we need to take that first step, can only be backed up by the track record of sponsorship that we have here today, so, I will sit down and close, I'll also entertain any questions from colleagues on this package as well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, the Alderman from the 7th and I agree, this is just a resolution, but this is not just a resolution, because we lay out in this resolution the financing, if the resolution was just a resolution, it would say, ta-da, we all support the family getting the soccer team, I don't think there's anybody would have any problem with that, because we could all do that, the problem is, this resolution goes on to lay out very specific things about financing, and so, this is more than a resolution, I have gotten more emails and calls about this soccer stadium than in the 20-something years I've been down here, because I want to say to the citizens of St. Louis, we're here today because you came out in April of last, of last 2017 and voted no against the soccer stadium, that we did not want to do taxpayer financing, and you overwhelmingly voted no, in fact, I think there were only six or seven wards that voted for it, people who didn't expect it, in the Central West End, they voted no, so, and we were told, oh, we won't get a chance if we don't vote for that, we would not be having this deal before us, except for the citizens were smarter than we were, and said no to the deal, so, when we have this deal before us today, it's not because it's something that we did, it's something that the citizens did, and I want to thank them for this, and saying that, I have gotten call and emails after emails, we already voted no, why are you doing this? So I have had to respond, this is a resolution, this is not a board bill, we will still have to hammer out things, but when you make all these specifics in here, you are really trying to tie people in, and if they come back later and say, well, no, you can say, well, you voted for the resolution. I have also had the displeasure of being down here for many, many years to hear projections that didn't just come through, I've been here from the original Rams deal, which they told us was going to pay for itself, but it did not, it never made more than $4.2 or $3 million towards its $6 million debt, even when the Rams won a championship, so, as of today's date, as we speak, we are still paying that $6 million debt for, I guess, another year, two years to 2021, I think it is, so we are still paying off that debt that they promised us, I was here when we took and changed the earnings tax, and it said it would only cost us $300 and some thousand dollars, the first deal that cost us a million dollars, and it's cost us a million dollars since that time, I was here when we got behind the Renaissance Theater using money that should have been coming to North St. Louis, and we knew and said, this thing is not going to work, we had the first black mayor from New Orleans come here, Mark Morrells, and lobby, 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 me, and he said, oh, you're so hard, but what happened? The hotel went into bankruptcy, so, projections of what will happen coming from the good people that are supposed to give us good projections has not been a good thing, okay, so, we cannot sit here and pretend like it has, I heard somebody say that Calvin Adams came and said this is a no-brainer, I find that so interesting that we have the superintendent of public schools coming and testifying for that, but you wouldn't find it so interesting if you remember, we don't have an elected school board, I remember when we had an elected school board, and the school board always came over here and testified against these things, because it was negative to the school boards, now, we have president of Board Aldermen appoint somebody, mayor appoint somebody, and the governor, we have a person who lives outside the city that runs the school board, and two people in South St. Louis, we have not had a person in North St. Louis own the school board that actually runs anything now for about 15 to 16 years, so, it's no wonder that the school board president, superintendent would come and say what a great deal this is, he has no choice, because two of the members who are supporting this, the mayor and the president, are appointing his bosses, so, I don't call that a cleans-hands transaction, so I have to look at what they did before we had this, we should be controlling our own school board, as soon as in 2002, we elected our own school board, all of a sudden, we couldn't run our school board anymore, and it's gone on for much too long, and I look forward to the time when we have an elected board, if we believe in elections for our boards, then we should also believe that for the school board. I have some, Mr. President, members of the Board, if the sponsor would yield, I have a few questions, please.
Alderman from the 7th, we yield for questioning to the Alderman from the 1st.
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Are there, as I read, and so I want to just make sure, there are other teams, um, sorry, sorry. Okay, there are other entities that are applying for, is one spot left, is that what, is that true, that's what I read, that there was one spot left for a soccer team right now?
Yeah, I believe there's one or two spots left, and the MLS is going to be making this decision in the, I think sometime in the next month or so, here, I've got a list of who our sort of competitor cities are, I should be able to rattle these off.
I should be able to write all these off, but I cannot.
I don't need to know, I just, I don't have to have that.
Yeah, and this is, so this is by no means a done deal. I mean, even passing this today, you know, the ownership group still has to go make the pitch to the MLS to say, you know, give us the team.
I want to tell you, so I was here doing the Rams, and we actually got turned down twice before we got the Rams. So, like, when I say, I've been painfully aware of this, I've been painfully aware of this, okay? So I think one went to South Carolina, to the Panthers, and someplace else, so I know the process.
Obviously, I would add, if we don't, if we want to, if the city has not awarded a team, we're not building anything. We're not buying the land, we're not building a stadium.
Now, this site is, at one point, we were talking about doing a north-south distributor. I don't know if you're familiar with that. And the city bought up the land that's right there at where, because it's right there. That's the site that we're talking about, right?
Yes, it's that MoDOT-owned land. It's the, I don't know, 21st Street on-ramp and off-ramp, those twisty ones there, west of Union Station.
And we have kind of that road that just fall, that runs out. And that was the north-south distributor. I think when the president first came on board as the 6th Ward Alderman, we were still putting money in it, because we were going to do a north-south distributor that never got done. Okay, so I know we used to spend money on that. Do you know if any of that money that we used would be used with this project at all?
So right now, that land is all owned by MoDOT. It's not owned by the city. So I don't know, I can't speak to the transaction that may have happened, how MoDOT acquired that land. I was under the impression that that land was acquired by MoDOT way back when they were building the interstate highway system and thought about running 55 through that stretch of town, which would have taken out Lafayette Square.
But if you get off there, you'll see that part that just kind of runs out, that's a separate little part. We were talking about doing the north-south distributor, but we never got past that, okay? But we did spend money towards that, so I just never knew what happened to that.
Say that if this project comes to fruition, what will happen is, you know, MoDOT is in negotiations with the ownership group and with LCRA and LCRA Holdings. And, you know, they have to come to an agreement on what the value of the land is. The land would be paid for with private funds, but the land would be in the title of LCRA Holdings and ultimately be a city asset.
Right. And so that was my next question, you kind of answered. So I've read different things, that MoDOT was giving the land to LCRA. I didn't think that that was true at all.
There has to be an exchange of funds. I don't believe they can just give the land.
And LCRA will be reimbursed, whatever money they spend, or will be advanced that money from the private owner equities?
Correct, one or the other. I don't know how, the specifics of that. But yes, it's not, we're not spending any public funds on acquiring the land.
I want this to be out on the record, because there's a lot of misinformation about what actually happened. And so if people didn't watch the committee hearing, there are things that are being said that are not true. Okay. I'm looking at page 2 of the resolution for subsection D. It says, "An exemption from sales tax on construction material for the stadium's construction will be, will save between $4 and $5 million in construction costs." Can you tell me how that exemption works? Do we reimburse, or do we disnot charge, or how does that work?
I can't give you the mechanics of whether it's reimbursed or not charged on the front end. But, I mean, this is a common tool used in many redevelopment projects in the city under chapter 99. It's a, you know, sales tax reimbursement on construction materials, most of which obviously are not purchased in the city. We don't have a lot of construction materials being bought here.
That was my question, right. So where if they purchase someplace else?
If they're purchased somewhere else, they still can get that exemption that's authorized under state law. And that'd have to be approved by LCRA.
It has to be approved by, I'm sorry.
LCRA, the exemption.
All right.
And I could say probably almost every project happening, major development project in the city, receives that same subsidy.
And one thing you kind of talked about a little bit, but under 4A, it talks about the Port Authority and the city, and the creation and use of a stadium-specific community improvement district, a transportation development district, and a port improvement district. So I know that right now, we're having some disagreements about making the whole city a port improvement district. So are we anticipating that maybe we won't make the whole city that, and then we would just do that area right there?
Let me speak first to the TDD and the Cid. Obviously, those will require authorizing legislation from this body, right? Those two, that 2%, 1% Cid, 1% TDD, will have to come through this body. I know we have legislation in front of us about expanding the Port Authority. If we ultimately pass that and expand the Port Authority, they're going to implement a 1% Port Authority tax. So there'd be a 3% tax levied on the site that would raise roughly $21 million over the 30-year term of the project. This is site-specific tax. But now, if we don't expand the Port Authority, that is a question. If we don't do that, I don't know. We might have to look elsewhere to some other mechanism for levying a 1% tax. That's an uncertainty I can't answer.
Or could you imagine that we just do it in that area, not the entire place? And I will tell you why. I've been reading about the county. They've been had a big problem out there. In fact, the county council did what I think this Board of Aldermen should do. They've got control out there, okay? Legislators got power out there. And they took it from the county executive with some things that he was doing. So could you anticipate that maybe we would just do it in that area and not the entire city?
I suppose that is possible, Alderman. We could just, I don't know the mechanism of that. But, I mean, if we expand the Port Authority, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to include the whole city. We could take a stretch-out market, I suppose, yeah.
Even from, you know, from the port, from the actual water line to a place, right?
Right, yeah, we could do that.
And do downtown or something like that, and just not do the entire city.
Right. I hope Otis is watching and taking note of that.
I beg your pardon?
I said, I hope Otis is watching and taking note of that idea.
Well, I hope he is too, because it always seems like when something, let me tell you part of the problem I also have. When there is something that is needed downtown, everything else gets put down, okay? And so you put all this energy into downtown. We've been working on a hardware store, which we do not have in North St. Louis, and not has, have not had for 40 years, except for little small hardware stores. So all of a sudden, I lose these people, because this is so much more important. This is the problems that I have about taking planning energies and acting like that nothing but downtown exists. There are other neighborhoods that exist. So when you do this, you lose me, because you're not working on my project that I've been talking about for much longer. And you say to the people that a stadium is more important than where they live. I think that's a mistake on LCRA, SLDC, CDA, and anybody else that does that, okay? And that they should stop doing that, that they should have energy and time invested for other neighborhoods. I have another question for you. When we first brought this stadium issue up, it was in the 6th Ward. Or is it still in the 6th Ward? And I'm talking about in 2017. Is it still in the 6th Ward?
The same exact site's being proposed, it's still in the 6th Ward.
So I have a problem that the Alderman from the 6th is being left out. I think that is ridiculous. And I know she can speak for herself, and I'm sure she will, but I don't like that. I don't like that. She was good enough to shepherd it through the last time. The whole point of having Alder people in wards is because they have an insight that's strictly for them. And so all of a sudden, now, it becomes, we don't have to deal with you, I have a problem with that. You don't know what's called the first ward, but the real 20th ward better than I do. And I don't know this site and the situation better than the Alderman from the 6th. And I don't think you would like if people start doing that in the 7th. One thing we're talking about, is this stadium supposed to be a 30-year? Because one of the things, it's supposed to be 30 years. One of the things I read in the paper is there's already some discussion about where the money would come from for demolition of the facilities in 25 years. So they're anticipating that, and I know why, because we don't keep these facilities any longer than that. But then there are some things in there that talks about 30 years. Why are we talking about a 30-year financing if we're only anticipating that it's going to be there? And, which is probably more realistic, 25 years or less.
So it's a 30-year, what's contemplated is a 30-year triple-net lease. And part of the proposal includes rebating half of the ticket tax, which none of our major sports teams currently pay, so 2.5%. The other 2.5% of the ticket tax would go towards a fund. A fund not controlled by the ownership group, controlled by the city, that would be used for either future improvements or demolition. Now, over the life of the lease, so 30 years, that fund's estimated to generate 28-something, $28 million, okay? Obviously, that would be ample money to tear down the facility if need be at the end of the lease, if MLS goes belly-up or something else. I would suspect if we get 20 years down the road, and MLS is a big success, and the Kavanaugh's and the Taylors are loving being part of this soccer league, that if they want to make future improvements, they'll come back and we'll renegotiate whatever future agreement. But during the terms of the lease, during the 30 years, they are responsible for, they will be responsible for maintenance, upkeep, and improvements. That is solely on the ownership group, not on the city. The fund being set up, that is city-controlled, is simply for, at the end of the lease term, if this thing completely falls apart, it'll be to demo the land. And we heard a presentation by John Ferry, who did a bunch of research into different stadiums that have been demolished in the last, you know, few years around the country. And I think the most expensive one was a massive football stadium that cost like $10 million to demolish. So if you extrapolate 30 years out, you know, everyone believes that this fund would be enough to cover demolition of a stadium of this size.
But if, so what, so if the soccer team leaves and it's not successful, or we lose them, which I hope we don't give outs like we did for the Rams. Oh, if you don't have the top-of-the-line stadium, you can just leave, okay? Who even puts that in there? And we got a whole city councilor. I thought back then that was dumb, and it still is dumb, and look what happened. So they're out there enjoying themselves in LA. So we don't, we're not anticipating to have that kind of out loophole in anything that we negotiate, is that correct?
No, I don't anticipate those kinds of loopholes. And I can tell you, Alderman, I wouldn't support any of those types of loopholes. I mean, look, it's no secret that we've had some pretty contentious debates down here about stadium financing in the past. And I think we've, one, learned from those debates and from those projects, some of which came to fruition, some of which didn't, and from our failures. And I think we're going to, you know, apply that to this project.
Well, and much has been made of that this is a female-led team. The original Rams was a female-led team, I want you to know that. So that doesn't make it work out well. Everybody likes to blame Stan Kronke, but he was not the major, it was Georgia Frontier. So we need, I always, people say, well, you take up for him. I don't, I just don't, I think it's unfair that we put that burden on him when it was not, he did not make that deal. And I think the burden still is on the city of St. Louis for putting such a loophole in there. What do we have, the members of the city councilor, if we don't stop things like that? And we also have lawyers that work over at SLDC. So I've always thought that was a purposeful thing. So now, how are we anticipating who's going to own this stadium? Because I've heard that they, first that they were going to own it, then that they were going to buy it, and then gift it to us. So what is it that you understand is the way the ownership will work, please?
The land and the building will be owned by the, by LCRA, sure, LCRA. And there will be a 30-year triple-net lease with the ownership group, responsible for all maintenance and upkeep and improvements during that period. But we ultimately will own the land. And so at the end of the lease term, again, if this, if MLS becomes, isn't successful, or the Taylors and the Kavanaugh's decide they don't want to be a part of this anymore and walk away, we will own all that improved land. We will have a fund, we can demolish the stadium, we can do whatever we want with it, and we will have a developable parcel in downtown West.
Okay, and so by us owning the land, then they will not pay taxes?
They will not pay property taxes, that's correct.
Which is much of what we have with the Blues over in our facility right now.
Similar, but I would also note that right now, there's no property taxes being earned by the land that we're contemplating. I mean, it's all government-owned.
But when we look in our future, we hope for property taxes. Because the St. Louis is property taxed and land is stressed out. I mean, so the whole point of development is at some point that we actually have other people besides our citizens paying property taxes. And I think that's why they were not supportive of taxpayer-financed stadium in the first place, because they see how much we do tax abatement tips and other things, and then they never, ever come to fruition that they're paying that tax. I mean, I wanted to speak to, the Cardinals was that one location baseball team until they used up all the tax abatement that they could. Tear the building down, move right across the street, you can do the tax abatement again. So do we have any sports facilities that you know of right now? Or any sports team that are paying their own tax, property taxes right now?
No, property taxes, no. Now, I would note that this, there's going to be taxes, other taxes levied.
I understand.
Payroll tax, earnings tax, sales and use tax. And in the first year alone, you know, the city's going to realize $1.4 million in taxes from this site that doesn't currently realize.
Okay, the other thing is going back to the public schools. So I looked at, I read all of that. And I'm looking at the estimated fiscal impact of tax abatement. And one of the things that I noticed is that the city of St. Louis is going to get a municipal operation total nominal abatement value of 8.872808.
Sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I'm looking at all the other entities that should be getting taxed that won't be getting any taxes, because we have abatement. And I've always found it interesting that the city will look out for themselves better than the St. Louis public schools. So I think that when we come back, we need to do, if this goes through, that that is unfair of us to take money away from the schools and give ourselves more money. So I think we need to really look at the School District General Fund, okay? So I'm hoping that we will do a better, it's on the second line, that we will do a better job. If we're the ones giving tax abatement and making the vote, that we will do a much better job of making sure that the school board is looked out for. If that's our decision, that we want to take tax dollars away, we should give some kind of in lieu of back to the school board so that they would be getting the money that they will be getting if they were paying taxes, okay? School board is very important. At some point, we're going to have to start looking at that. And again, we got two members of E&amp;A that is there, that I think are taking a double role that they should not have. So let me just advocate and say, that's not fair. I want the city of St. Louis to have the money. But if we're saying it's okay, then we should be giving that money to the school board, not us. Mr. President, I have no further questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I want to say, this is a much better deal than what was before us. But again, if you had just brought something that says, do I support them having a soccer team? I do. I do not like that you put all these details in something that I cannot support. And to look at the votes of how the people voted. Now, if I thought the people were voting for something illegal, if somebody voted for slavery, I would not be down here advocating, well, my ward voted for slavery, so we should do that. Or if they voted to gerrymann, I would not advocate for that. But the people have clearly told us, and I think the more we put it out, they would tell us more strongly, that they don't want us doing taxpayer things. I think you walked right up to that line of being pretty good, but I wish you just could have said, we supported it, and then worked out something where there was more input. For that reason, I'm not going to support it. But I don't think it's as horrible as people think it is. And I think it's a lot better than what we had. And we only got that because we put it out to a vote and listened to the people. And I think we need to do that more and be more careful financially with our monies. And so, as I said, there's some things in here I really can't support. I can't support us taking money and taking it away from the school board. And I don't like the exacting legislation, because I can almost guarantee it's going to come back and be exactly that. So everybody says, oh, that's going to be, that's just a resolution. It is still just a resolution. And that's what I started out telling everybody. But I'm not going to support it. But I'm not adamantly opposed to it as I was to other things. And I think it's a better deal than what we've had before.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further, Alderman from the 6th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say for the record, I am very excited about the possibility of soccer in St. Louis. I did shepherd through the last bill that would have brought soccer here. And I'm excited that the Taylors and Kavanaugh's are back at the table with us. I will say, it's our best position here as city leaders to offer a unified front to MLS if we want to bring soccer here. I would have preferred to have the confidence in the negotiation process that was undertaken and for Alderman's due diligence and asking questions to not be vilified. To the Alderman from the 1st point, I do not know what happened, why I was removed from the negotiations. The last conversations I had, I was told on October 29th that the ownership group did not mind owning the stadium. I went back and forth with them with a couple of versions of a draft of a resolution, and then no one ever contacted me again. I asked multiple times to meet with the ownership group. I thought it was very strange that the owners of this deal never sat down with me. That's never happened to me, or I think anyone else here at the board, where you're only dealing with one attorney and not allowed to speak to anyone else. I also say, it did give me pause that all of my colleagues who signed on to this resolution as cosigners, nobody bothered to pick up the phone or email me or call me to ask what happened, or how they could be helpful in bringing the resolution here. The absence of a public vote also, I think, heightens our due diligence here at the board. And my residents are very concerned about some of the pieces of this resolution. And although it's just a resolution, it does serve as the framework for what we're going to do when we get back here once we are awarded a team. to do when we get back here once we are awarded a team. I was working closely with the comptroller, the budget director, our financial analyst and attorney here. We all had similar concerns that were never addressed. The ownership group and the sponsor chose not to amend the resolution to address things in writing, such as cost overruns, pre-development costs, maintenance, major renovations, union protections, and green building standards, and also encouraging the practice facilities and administrative offices to be located here in the city of St. Louis. It could've been a real game changer for North St. Louis or Deep South St. Louis, which have seen such disinvestment over the years. Rubber stamping complex and long-term financial deals such as this is dangerous, and I think asking questions is a healthy process. I also think we deserve a real answer about why the team chose not to own the stadium. I don't think that's been answered yet. I am encouraged that, moving forward, that the LCRA will have the ability to negotiate the lease. I spoke to their chairman this morning. He welcomes feedback from the Board of Aldermen and a real negotiation in making sure that lease is solid and that the city is protected both today and 30 years from now. That's when we get ourselves in trouble. We all know that we received a credit down rating after we made our financial commitments to Scott Trade, and I would hate to see that happen to our predecessors in the years to come. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see the opportunity that an MLS team brings to the city of St. Louis, and I can see the opportunity that the deal before us also brings, brings to the city. And I will support this resolution. I do want to echo, and I agree with my colleagues who say that it is up to us to really take our role seriously, our role of oversight and due diligence, and that we will need to continue in that role throughout the process. I am grateful for everyone on all the conversations that have happened to get us to this point, and I realize that this is the beginning of many more conversations. And I just want to end by saying that I encourage those that are working on behalf of the city and on behalf of the ownership team to really work collaboratively and look at the other opportunities that this brings to our city. MLS has a whole set of greener goals for themselves, encouraging and inspiring teams to embrace things like renewable energy, recycling, healthy food, water efficiency. And so I really encourage us to look, as we move through this process, what other opportunities are here, for us to reflect on the other commitments that we've already made as a city, to be 100% clean energy. We have a sustainability plan, we have a green dining alliance, we have so many other tools that we could be leveraging through this process to really make this something that we all can be really proud of, not just for sports reasons and health reasons, but also really moving our city forward, and especially in light of everything that we are learning and that is being reiterated over and over again about the seriousness of climate change. When we take on a project of this magnitude and this scope, we really can be making a statement and really moving the city forward and using this as an example of how we can be a more sustainable city. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I really want to thank the voters in the city of St. Louis who forced us back to the table on this. This is a remarkably better deal than was before the voters a year and a half ago. And I think it's an important lesson for us at the board, that we don't always have to take the first deal that's put in front of us, and that sometimes negotiation means saying no in order to force us back to the drawing board to make better decisions. This is not just a resolution, and my concern with this is that this is our starting place for negotiation. And when we negotiate, I think that it's important that we are putting our best, strongest negotiation forward as a city, as our first place of negotiation. What will inevitably happen is, as the stadium costs start to come back to us and things end up being costing more than expected, that we will be asked to come forth with more public support. And I think having some of those things written out in this resolution to say that this, there are things that we are not willing to entertain, would be very important for our future ability to negotiate. What we are doing here today is as good as this deal will get for us. So the question is, is this as good as we can do? And I'm not sure that it is. And the reason I'm not sure that it is, is because I think we need to look to Minneapolis. Minneapolis's stadium deal for MLS is structured very, very similar to this. The only difference, the only real difference between that and this is who owns the stadium. And in their deal, it is the ownership group rather than the city that took ownership. So I called some of the folks that I know that sit on the Minneapolis City Council, and I talked to them about that. And I talked to them about their reasons for not wanting ownership. And the concern was around future expansion. And is the team going to come back to them in 15 years, in 10 years, in 20 years, in 30 years, and be asking for bonds or other financial assistance in order to expand? Are there going to be costs that are put onto the city that we haven't even thought about at this point in time if the city were to be the owners of it? And so my concern in this also comes from a couple of articles that have recently been in both the Wall Street Journal and in Forbes, that have talked about the financial health of the MLS. What we're seeing right now is that the MLS has not been profitable. That doesn't mean that it never will be profitable, but at right now, it is not. And so the concern is, what happens if this does not work out? What happens if the team leaves or MLS goes under in 10 years, in five years, and the city is left holding the bag on a stadium? That we will have not, by that point in time, generated the money into this fund to demo it and repurpose it for another use. So the question I think we need to ask ourselves is, is the projected $1.4 million a year in tax revenue that this is projected to breed and worth the risk of knowing that we may have other expenses associated with this in the future? And we are, we have an opportunity, I think, to, to do this right, and to make sure that the people who come after us in 10 years, or 20 years, or 30 years are not standing on this board and cussing us because we didn't do as much as we could've done to make sure that this was a good deal for taxpayers. So while I think that this is a much better deal than it was before, I do think that the risk does not outweigh the reward for us as a city. And so I support MLS coming here. I also support a city that is financially healthy and is not taking a risk that could end up hurting us down the line in 10, 15, 20 years. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to start by saying thank you to the ownership group for this opportunity and their significant investment in our city and our region. I think that absolutely needs to be said. This, again, non-binding resolution sets forth some of the necessary framework for a successful partnership between the city and the ownership group and the MLS. And as representatives of the people, we should have concerns about this and any proposal that comes before us. And there are questions that are outstanding that are not laid out in the resolution. I and some of my colleagues this morning have expressed some of our, some of those concerns, some of which were asked at the hearing on Wednesday, but were not included in those, in the resolution, even if answers were given, such as cost overruns on construction, the amusement tax that is, does actually delineate in the resolution to say that it supports major future improvements and, if warranted, the demolition of the stadium. So what happens when that fund is depleted? What, if this, if this development will conform to any of our city's sustainability plan, such as Alderwoman Navarro detailed? And that, that these concerns would be raised in the lease negotiations, of which we hope that there's, there's input from the Board of Alderman going forward on that. And I rise in support of this resolution because I believe in collaboration as a means of growth for our city and our region. I hope that the ownership group will welcome building relationships with us, so that as we continue this process, we do this in the best interest of the people. Soccer's universal, it's approachable, it is St. Louis. I thank the Taylor and Kavanaugh families for coming to us with their significant investments, and that we will proceed without the funds needed from the St. Louis city taxpayers, and we should continue in that direction. Collaboration and transparency will, between business leaders, governments, and the community, and amongst ourselves as leaders in the city government, that sort of transparency and collaboration will draw the support necessary for this project to thrive, and these should be goals for us as leaders and representatives in all of our projects. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And I understand it's just a resolution we're passing today, and I think as we get back to the tables, we have to make sure, you know, the financing will be there, you know, the risk of the monies down the road. I feel very confident about it. You know, St. Louis is, is really became a big soccer town. I do a lot of secondary work for Soccer Master, Soccer Places. St. Louis has been ready to support a soccer team. So, you know, it's nice that, you know, we have owners that's willing to put up their money. And also, you know, the Alderwoman, my friend from the first, I agree with her, we've had bad deals in the past when the Rams came here. But who in their right mind would let anybody sign a 20-year lease on a 30-year note? You know, that, that was a deal, that those bonds were 30 years, and we let them come in because we were so excited to get a football team, I believe is why they got away with that. You know, and we've had failures before, but I, I think when you got people that's involved, I think that has very good credibility. I think they'll work with the city, you know, they're not looking for nothing free, they just want a chance to have something that's very popular now. Actually, I enjoy the women's soccer more than the men's because they're terrible. But seriously, it's a resolution, I will support the resolution, and I, I think for right now, we can live with that and get it worked out at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Willie Alderman from the seventh, yield for questions?
Alderman from the seventh, we yield to Alderman from the 10th.
Of course.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Alderman from the seventh, do we have an MLS team currently?
No, not to my knowledge.
Have they agreed to come here yet?
No, they have not.
Okay, I'm an old guy, and there's a term that my parents taught me about things, it's called wooing. When you meet a girl, you're supposed to woo her, you're supposed to show her how happy you are to know her. Why, she fell in love with me, but it took her mother-in-law six years to let me in the house before we could get married. What we're trying to do is show the MLS what a city we are, how glad we are to have them. Now, once you get married, then things change. And I'm sure things will change, because it's, it's life. You know, this is about getting, we have a wonderful, God bless the Taylors and the Kavanaws, this is a wonderful thing they're doing for the city of St. Louis. What they're doing is enabling us to try and woo this team to this city. Get them here, let's get married, then the fighting starts, okay? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the first?
I have no words about what he just said. As a person been married 30 years, and October the 29th, and been with my spouse for 42 years, I have no words except for to say, how you woo her is how you should continue to treat her. And if you do not make a happy wife, you will have an unhappy life, okay? I do want to address a few things Alderwoman from the 15th said about what will happen. You just gotta look at what's happening right now, that we're, what will happen if we don't have enough? What will happen? What will happen is, we're paying that $6 million from the top of our money that we're supposed to be spending on tearing buildings down, cutting grass, and all these city services that people want. Because if you don't make it that they're responsible for, the city takes care of it. And everybody talks about the wooing, and we're trying to show people, I've been through this, this is the exact same thing that we went through with the Rams. We were run, Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor Bosley was the mayor then, he went to all these things, he was rah rah rah, we were trying to get a target over in my community. He said, I can't do that, because I gotta go get these, this football team. Football team is gone, been gone for a while, we're still using our funds to pay for it, this football team, so that will be what will happen with the stadium. And the only reason it won't happen with the stadium is that we put exact wording in, and I even think that we need to have a bond or some funding that makes sure that if they don't do what they're saying, or insurance or something, that we have this other pot of money to pay for it. I'm also very disappointed because I'm reading about all these other places that are doing community benefits. And I know the Alderwoman from the 15th tried to do that, and people just bombarded her, and they really, I think, disparaged her name unfairly, because it is a good idea. And people do it in different ways. Some people don't put it in, but then they have it in their wards that their developers give their award organizations and development teams money. But while you're talking about Matthew Dickey, which is in my ward, and I've represented Matthew Dickey for near on 20-something years, is that Matthew Dickey, and I don't want to disparage them, but if you ask the Penrose community, how many of them are involved with Matthew Dickey? And I had this same conversation with Alderman from the third. You won't find that they do. It's a lot of people that come from outside the city that use Matthew Dickey. So when you use that and you jump up and down and say, but Matthew Dickey is getting the money, Matthew Dickey ought to be getting the money and working with the neighborhood childrens. It costs $50 to use Matthew Dickey. People, any little things, they can't afford that. Yet Matthew Dickey sits in the park, uses up a great part of the park, and does not have outreach in Penrose community. So, and that tells me that there are some outside people who thought this was a great idea, but nobody talked to me to say, is this a great idea? Because I would say, you need to make it so that it's a great idea. So telling me that Matthew Dickey is getting money when they don't, when they don't interact with my community does not make me feel good. It just means Matthew Dickey and their corporate interests, or the people who come from outside and drive into and use Matthew Dickey is getting that money. Well, certainly it's not the community kids that can't afford to pay that $50. We have to stop being in love with sports team. For us to sit here and say there is not one sports team that pays their own property taxes is just appalling to me. Because the people are saying, are saying to me, why don't they pay their own taxes? Why is it that you can't get us the things we need in our community, but you can always give millionaires and billionaires what they want? All they gotta come into it there and say is, we got this great idea. Now, I know this city, the, part of the answer is, this city needs revenue. A city cannot operate without revenue. And so, and you have to have hope that this will be the latest, greatest idea that will actually work. But when you fail so often on the things, and then you have to pay for it, when you put $10 million in the street along Washington and then it's obsolete now, but it's communities where people live that you are plunging them into lifetimes of neglect because you don't spend any of that money, time, and energy in planning for that community to succeed, it makes it very hard for the people who represent those communities to say, yeah, this is a great idea and get excited, especially when you've been through this 1, 2, 7, 8, 10 times and saw so many failures. You cannot, when you come back here and we make this deal, if we get the soccer team, you gotta do a better job of dotting i's and crossing the t's. And you try to keep the people away from the table who actually are the biggest critics. Those should be the people who are at the table helping cut the deals, because when you got cheerleaders at the tables, they give everything away. The most critical people should be there so that you can make sure that we get the best deal for city of St. Louis. And I think the reason why the most critical people are not at the table is because we do not want to get the best deal for city of St. Louis. It was not a mistake that we gave the Rams that out, that was done purposefully, because they knew it was there. And I will suggest that when we, if we get this soccer deal, there will be purposeful loopholes that will allow all kind of things that should not be done. And we are supposed to be the financial stewards of this city, and we can do a better job of that. Great that they're gonna bring this money in, but we're taking the position that at no time, no sports team should ever pay for anything that they want to own, that we should always give them something. But I even think we should learn from the Rams deal, because first we told the Rams, no, we could not come up with that money. And then when the Rams said they were gonna go to California, we found money that we could throw at them, and the Rams said, I don't want your money, I'm out of here, okay? So I thought that was, leave the Rams alone and let them move to California. And there are places that are saying no more often to these stadiums and to these wealthy people. And I appreciate the Taylors, and I appreciate that people want to have a soccer stadium. But I think at some points, maybe it's when we have the Jaxfield or the, or the kickball field or something, that we could say, you could pay for your own, because we just do not seem to find any kind of sports team that can pay for their own anything. They might put some of the money, but they're gonna find a way not to pay the taxes, and then we're gonna find a way for that to come away from the St. Louis public schools, which we desperately need. We always talk about how important education is, but it's not. And not to have a community benefit or something attached to benefit the community is shameful. And when we come back to do dot the i's and cross the t's, I hope you will go and look at the successful community benefits across this, across the United States, and find out that was not a bad idea, it was nothing. And if you're just... And if you're just rejecting it because of who brought it, shame on whoever did that because it was a good idea.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
I'm going to keep it short. We keep on talking about the football team, and if we're going to try to compare Stan Kronke to the Taylors who have given hundreds of millions of dollars to Forest Park and everything that's gone in this city, shame.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
One more time, Stan Kronke did not cut that deal. We need to stop putting, that's misinformation. Georgia Frontiere was the person that cut that deal. Now, he may have decided he was going to leave with the Rams, but do not, you know, and I'm not a person that needs to take up for a billionaire, but it's just misinformation. And we put it out there like he did, we cut that deal, we had lawyers. So, I'm not going to disparage Mr. Kronke because he didn't do anything wrong. He did the best deal that he could, which was already on the table. So, we need to stop acting like that he did that because he did not, okay? And I can't compare Mr. Kronke to Mr. Taylor because they all got lots of money, that's how I'm going to compare them. And nothing's wrong with people wanting to make the best deal. There's nothing wrong with us trying to get the best deal for the City of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Appreciate the comments and the support from my colleagues, and I'd like to thank all the folks who've worked on this resolution and these plans. And with that, I renew my motion and ask for your favorable consideration of Resolution 180.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 7th, second by the Alderman from the 19th, Alderman from the 6th and 10th, that we adopt Resolution 180. It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vollmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Martin. 26 aye votes and two no votes.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and adopt a Resolution 180.
Resolution 185, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Martin, and Alderwoman Middlebrook, Equitable Infrastructure Growth Program.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution 185.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we second read and finally pass Resolution 185.
We move by Alderman from the 16th and second by Alderman from the 22nd. Please proceed, Alderman.
Very briefly, this is a resolution that gives support to the Chief Technology Officer of the City of St. Louis to continue under the Smart Cities banner and initiative to provide an equitable infrastructure growth platform. This is working with all the utilities, other city departments, telecommunication folks to make sure we come up with an equitable plan of how we coordinate infrastructure improvements throughout the city. So, this is a 5, 10, 15-year plan of how we can get better in coordinating all these efforts throughout the city that we improve our infrastructure for what is the changing technology of tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I'll close.
All right. Alderman from the 8th, would you like to add your name?
Actually, well, I would like to ask a question of the Alderman from the 16th.
Alderman from the 16th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 8th?
I will.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you so much, Alderman. I just had a quick question. We had a public utilities presentation from the Streets Department, and the Streets Department is included along with the other utilities, and they were indicating that they're undergoing a similar type of project to try to coordinate between utilities and things. I just want to be sure that our Chief Technology Officer is working with the Streets Department, that this is all sort of engaged in the same service, that we're not replicating that.
The answer is absolutely yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right. Alderman from the 16th, actually, Madam Clerk, without objection, from the Alderman from the 16th, Alderman from the 13th would like to add her name to the resolution. And also, the Alderman from the 19th, please add myself also to the resolution. Alderman from the 8th, Alderman from the 14th, Alderman from the 9th, 3rd, and 23rd. And the 10th. And the 5th.
Oh, wow.
I think we got it. You just might have the votes to get this out today, Alderman.
Take nothing for granted.
All right, Alderman from the 8th, Alderman from the 16th, you recognize, and Alderman from the 27th. Alderman from the 16th, you recognize close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, second by Alderman from the 22nd, that we adopt Resolution 185. All in favor, signal 5%. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lanis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, December 4th, Streets Traffic and Refuge Meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, December 5th, Ways and Means, 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Thursday, December 6th, Transportation and Commerce Meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, December 7th, Full Board Meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 3rd.
Just wanted to invite everybody out to my dad's 85th birthday party. We'll be at the River Lily, which is right at 1428 Salisbury, at 3 o'clock on Saturday. So, if you all would like to come out and just say what's up to the young man or the old guy, you can come on out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite anyone who's interested in coming down to South Grand's Grinchmas Celebration. You can, down at Apothecus Comic Book Shop on South Grand, you can come and get your picture taken with the Grinch, and that's kind of a fun difference if you didn't want to with Santa Claus. That is from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., 3206 South Grand. And also, the International Institute is sponsoring its International Holiday Bazaar with crafts and goods from all over the world at the International Institute on Saturday as well. So, would love to see you out on the 8th.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President. After you leave Grand for their events, come on down to Cherokee Street where we have our annual Cherokee Antique Row Cookie Spree, as well as our annual Cherokee Print Bazaar. So, please come on down Cherokee for those two events.
All right, Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This weekend is the annual Soulard Holiday Parlor Tour. Tickets are a limited number, tickets are still available at soulard.org. It's when some of our residents show off their fabulous historic homes down in Soulard and decorate them for the holidays. Hope you can make it down. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 28th.
Much, Mr. President. This weekend, also, the Holiday Window Walk is kicking off in the Central West End. Santa Claus will be making a visit at Maryland Plaza. We've got the Euclid Shuffle will be driving people up and down Euclid for free, so come on down at 5 o'clock as the tree lighting. Hope to see you there.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the 26th, you have an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just wanted just to thank the staff that has worked with me over the years, and my secretaries, and, you know, with Michelle Knox, Lisa, Tina, just a host of them, Mar Reese, with the staff, with the board, Alderman. Thank you so much, you've been very helpful, you know, since I've been there, Alderman, and I'll miss you. Thanks so much, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 11th be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 18th and second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signal 5%. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, December 7th, 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 10th. All in favor, signal 5%. Aye. Opposed? Stand adjourned.